Good morning, everybody. It's 10:15 in Los Angeles, California.
We can also be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grulhan, Laban, Giladlo, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Lain, Padilla, 12 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, let me recognize Councilmember Misakowski for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. It gives me great pleasure today to introduce a number of guests who are joining us, and these guests are really our colleagues. These are mayors and business leaders from the Inland Empire who are here to say they want to be our partners. They want to be our partners in the future in terms of the region, in terms of aviation growth, and they have capability, political leadership, and infrastructure available today to take their fair share of the demand in our system. We know what we're going through here in the city of Los Angeles. We're going through a master plan, a master plan to make sure that our Los Angeles International Airport is safe, is secure, is modernized, is convenient, is upgraded, and is limited. We have with Mayor Han a plan that is being proposed, and we're going to debate the merits of the plan and the details of the plan, but I think we all agree with the plan on a cap, a 78 million airline passenger cap. As a consequence of that, we know the demand is going to grow in the region, and we need to be able to meet it. Aviation is essential to the entire Southern California economy, and it's important right now to make best use of the assets available, best use of partnership, and we have those partners here today. The Inland Empire is particularly rich in airport capacity. It's got three airports, four airports that were former military bases that have capability today, and I'm going to introduce each of these mayors. They're not all They're not all going to speak to us. We have a shortened program. We just recently, we just came from a press conference where they all addressed their capabilities, their needs, and what they can do for this region. But I would like to ask each of them to stand up, and then we'll call on some to speak. First, Mayor Mike Gordon from the city of El Segundo. He's the convener of this partnership. Mayor Gary Ovatt from the city of Ontario, along with Mayor Pro Tem Paul Leon. City Mayor Judith Vias from the city of San Bernardino. Mayor Terry Caldwell from the city of Victorville. Mayor Pro Tem Bob Hunter from the city of Victorville, and the city manager John Roberts from Victorville. Also joining us are Greg Diodati, the managing partner of March Inland Port, Jim Gorley, San Bernardino International Airport, Penny Chua, San Bernardino International Airport, Dougal Agan, Southern California Logistics Airport, Jane Duer, the Marketing and Public Affairs Director for the city of San Bernardino, and Mark Ostwich, who is the Chair of the Inland Empire Economic Partnership. Members, yes, let's welcome them. These are our partners in making sure that we serve the Southern California economy and region in its air transport capability, not only passenger capability, but that all-important cargo capability. Mayor Gordon, let me introduce you to say a few words to the council.
Good morning, members of the council. It's great to see a lot of wonderful friends here before us this morning. Let me just begin by thanking Councilwoman Misakowski for her wonderful leadership on our behalf on this issue. As many of you know who've sat on this council for the last eight years, we have dedicated our lives to building a regional airport system for Southern California, one that allows the city of Los Angeles and Southern California to meet its needs at LAX International Airport without having to assume the overbearing burdens of aviation travel and demand upon those that live around this airport. For the first several years, we fought viciously with the city of Los Angeles and its former mayor to prevent the expansion of Los Angeles International Airport, and I'm here today to say that we're very proud of the fact that we've now engaged in a new partnership with Mayor Han to constrain the airport of Los Angeles to 78 million passengers and to build a truly regional airport plan. I'm here today with my colleagues from the Inland Empire to introduce you to them, to show you that the regional Inland Empire is ready, willing, and able to be our partners, to develop the four airports in Inland Empire, and to provide our economy the opportunity to grow and foster through their efforts in Inland Empire. The final comment I want to say to each of you, as we have said repeatedly, is this is our window of opportunity. Today, we have the opportunity to work together in a partnership to build a regional airport system, one where we have four airports that are prepared to manage this burden as we go forward, one where we constrain the growth of LAX, where we still have 20 million passengers that can fly into LA International Airport, one that if we wake up 25 years from now and we look at each other and say that we missed this opportunity, our children and grandchildren will say, what were our parents and grandparents thinking? This is our time. We look forward to this partnership. We look forward to working with the city of Los Angeles and each of you as we go forward in this very important endeavor. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. And let me introduce now, representing the Inland Empire mayors, Mayor Judith Vias from the city of San Bernardino. Mayor Vias.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Misakowski, and thank you all, members of the council, for having us this morning. I'll read from a prepared text so that I won't go over my allotted time, but we know that the magnitude and the distribution of Southern California's expected growth means that no one community and no one airport can meet the region's aviation needs. March Inland Port, San Bernardino International, and Southern California Logistics are prepared to fulfill their role primarily as cargo airports. These three airports are former military bases that will serve primarily as specified or specialized cargo airports. Today, approximately 71% of all air cargo arrives in dedicated cargo aircraft. By 2030, more than 80% of our air cargo will arrive in dedicated cargo carriers. And fortunately, we have three excellent airport facilities in the Inland Empire anxious to take responsibility for a significant share of this market. I know I speak for all of the Inland Empire representatives here today. We would welcome the opportunity to work in partnership with Los Angeles to ensure the implementation of a regional airport plan. Let's begin today to work together as partners to address Southern California's aviation needs over the next two decades and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Vias. Members, we know that when we talk about Los Angeles World Airports, we talk about the need for a regional system, a regional structure. So I was really pleased today to bring these mayors showing political leadership, showing community will, showing infrastructure capability, to be our partners and make it real. We talk about it. We can see the maps. The maps demonstrate what is available, but that we have these real, live, politically-elected leaders who say, we want to make it happen. It's an opportunity, as Mayor Gordon says, that we can't pass up. I wanted to make it real, make it, demonstrate to you that there's a lot of other things out there that we need to be doing in the international aviation realm, and we have an incredible array of very willing partners to step up to the plate and do it with us. So thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members of the council.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Welcome to our colleagues. Yes, Mr. Labange?
No, I just want to thank Councilmember Misakowski for her leadership here on this, and I think it's awfully so nice to have all these great leaders from other parts of the Southern California area here, and it's just great because we're all in it together, and that leadership Cindy that you're doing is so important for us. And so many, I met the Deputy Mayor of Solano Beach, who you read his newspaper story about today, who was, when I was meeting and greeting the president of Amtrak at Union Station this morning, but he talked about what we all have to do together, and it's just so important. And what's interesting, Mr. President, the fellow from Solano Beach used to live in Inglewood, you know, and he moved there, and some of you may have used to live in Los Angeles. I know you're a homegirl from San Bernardino, as you told me, so right on for San Bernardino. But it's the interesting thing about our city, we all carry it together, but I want to thank you, Cindy, for putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and what I'd like to do next is recognize Ms. Han for a presentation.
Mr. President, colleagues, I would like to take a moment this morning in our chambers to recognize some international visitors that we have here today in Los Angeles. I would like to first welcome the Council General of the People's Republic of China, Council General Trung, and his wife, who have accompanied our guests here today. Coming all the way from China, we have three representatives of the All China Women's Federation here with us today. The All China Women's Federation, founded in 1949, is an organization dedicated to the advancement of Chinese women. Its mission is to represent and protect women's rights and interests and to promote equality. The women arrived in Los Angeles yesterday and will be leaving on Friday, and during their brief visit here, they are meeting with successful Los Angeles women to exchange ideas. They had a dinner last night with the National Organization of Chinese Women and will be attending the Sino-American Women's Federation Dinner later this evening. When I visited China with Councilman Garcetti last year, we felt very welcomed and very special in your country, and I hope that you feel the same way here in Los Angeles. I'm going to ask the Council General if you would introduce our visitor, since I was working on the pronunciation, but I just couldn't get it down, so if you will introduce them, and I will present them an official certificate as you introduce them.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and so glad here today I see so many friends. First is Madame Zhao, Madame Zhao Shao Hua. She is the Vice President of All Chinese Women's Federation.
Very good. Is that this?
Yes, Zhao Shao Hua.
That's me too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the second is Madame Zhou Xia Qiao, Deputy Director General, Department of International Affairs.
So much. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Third one is Madame Huang Zhu, Deputy Director, Department of International Affairs.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Again, thank you to Los Angeles. Welcome to Los Angeles. Thank you for being here, and I want you to know that we appreciate what you're doing. We commend your efforts, and women need to stick together wherever we live in this world, and I'm hopeful that you find your trip fulfilling, and we hope that your mission of equality for women in China happens one day. We were all excited today to see that China has sent a man to the moon. One day, it will be a woman to the moon. Thank you. Are we going to take pictures in the back? Yeah. So wait, let's go take them pictures.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Stein seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Ludlow seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items that have been requested to be continued. Item number one, a request from the owner to continue that matter to November 18th.
Colleagues, we have a request to continue item number one to November 18th. Is there any objection? Any objection to continuing item number one? Seeing none, item one is continued. Next item, please.
Item number six, a request from Building and Safety to continue that matter to November 4th.
Colleagues, request to continue item number six from the department. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, item six is continued. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, items noted for public hearing, items two and four are Building and Safety Report's confirmation of assessments.
Items two and four are now before us, colleagues, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Therefore, the public hearings are opened and closed. Are the members wishing to call either of these special? Items two and four, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items three and five, the Building and Safety Department has advised those matters may be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid.
Colleagues, recommendation from the department is now to receive and file items three and five. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Satisfying the public hearing, any discussion on items three and five? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on receiving and filing these matters. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are received and filed. Next item, please.
Item seven is also a public hearing item, and a committee report has been submitted recommending denial of the appeal.
And again, on item number seven, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearing is open and closed for item number seven. Members of the council wishing to call item seven special? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That recommendation is approved. Next item, please.
Items eight through nineteen, excuse me, eight through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items eight, item eight is a confirmation of a city official, planning land use management report has been submitted.
Okay, colleagues, items eight through 18 now before us. Item eight is a confirmation of a commissioner. Let's hold that temporarily on the desk. Nine through 18, public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, and seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? Mr. Ludlow.
Thirteen, continue for one week.
Okay, colleagues, request to continue item 13 for one week. New hearing date would be October 22nd. Without objection, item 13 is continued. Ms. Misakowski?
Item 12, special.
Item 12 called special by Ms. Misakowski. Any other specials? Mr. Ludlow.
For Councilmember Gruel, item 18, special.
18 called special for Ms. Gruel. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 19 through 42, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, items 19 through 42 will be before us today. Items 19 and 20 are confirmation of commissioners. I'll hold these temporarily on the desk. On items 19 through 42, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are opened and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Stein.
Thirty-three, please.
Thirty-three called special by Mr. Stein. Mr. Parks?
Twenty-two. Twenty-two.
Twenty-two called special by Mr. Parks. Mr. Garcetti, did you have a request?
No.
Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 43 through 48 are closed sessions. Do you wish to hold those matters on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk.
On the continuation agenda, item number 49 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes for consideration.
Okay, without objection, item 49 shall be considered by the city council today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on item 49. Therefore, satisfying the public hearings. Any member wishing to call item 49 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number eight is a confirmation of a commissioner, and that public hearing has been held in committee.
Okay, if Mr. Rodman can come forward. And members, we do have a committee report recommending approval on item number eight. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to very much affirm the recommendation of the Planning and Land Use Committee on Mr. Rodman. He is one of those great people who serves on our area planning commissions, and for many council members who know from our constituents and the kinds of cases that they deal with, they really help solve neighborhood problems. They are sort of like a little local planning land use court where people can come and testify and get a sense of fairness. And Mr. Rodman has been serving on that position. He's been serving very, very capably, and in fact, as I just said to him, although he comes from a background of a homeowners association president in the community, he has been very, very even-handed and is known at the APC for really understanding, listening to both sides. The nice thing about Matt is you don't necessarily know how he's going to vote, because he really goes in and listens to every case and tries to find the fairness and some sense of justice and equity in the situation. So he's, I think, an admirable commissioner, particularly in this position, and I'm very happy that his reappointment has been submitted and that we are here today to stand to confirm him.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to join with Ms. Misakowski. I think she put it absolutely perfectly, and I agree with what she said. We talked a little bit when you were before the committee, and I just want to reiterate to you how delighted I am that you're going to continue to serve the community in this regard. You understand very well exactly what the job of an APC is there for. You understand how the appellate process works. You understand the standards of review that you're supposed to employ, and you're dealing with an issue where people on both sides, whether it's a homeowner, or a developer, or a neighbor, who knows, oftentimes have very heated emotional views. They have a lot invested, one way or another, in the issue, and you've done a terrific job of being dispassionate and ruling on the facts and the law, and that's what your job is, and I'm delighted you're going to continue to do it. So thank you, Mr. Rodman, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members wishing to be heard on item number eight? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, and just want to say it was a pleasure meeting you, and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members.
Fourth with, please, on item number eight. Next item, please.
Item number 19 is confirmation of Ms. Luis Frankel to the Board of Fire Commissioners. Public safety waived consideration of this matter. Public hearing has not been held.
Okay, colleagues, item 19 now before us. Welcome, Ms. Frankel. Public hearing has not been held on item 19, but I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on Ms. Frankel's reappointment. Public hearing is therefore satisfied, and we'd like to hear from members now, beginning with Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. It gives me great pleasure today to stand and support the the renomination, the council president nomination of Ms. Louise Frankel to the Fire Commission. She has been an incredible fire commissioner. Before she even became a member of the Fire Commission, she was active in support of fire department efforts on brush clearance. She was a stalwart in helping the Fire Department get its brush clearance ordinance adopted in the, I guess, the mid-'80s. And then improve it and improve it and improve it. As she's been a member of the commission, she has seen ways that it can be even improved further, particularly in those where we aren't getting the clearance on time on the larger parcels and making sure that the Fire Department, working with the city attorney, gets those parcels cleared to remove that significant threat of brush in our hillsides, which really can threaten an awful lot of other territory and individuals. Beyond that, as a member of the Fire Commission, she is probably more than most, I think, an active and regular person who appears at each fire station to meet and talk to the firefighters, at firefighter events, Fire Department events. She is there going above and beyond the call of commissioner. And I just believe she, again, is a tremendous asset to the city. She's had many other lives. She's worked in Planning Arena. She's been a member of the former existing Board of Zoning Appeals. She's been a member of the County Economy and Efficiency Commission. And I dare say, if our new governor-elect hears about her, he'll find a place for her as well. But right now, I'm pleased that she's willing to re, to continue her service as Fire Commissioner and that we're lucky to have her.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Mr. Zine.
Where's Dennis? He's coming.
Why don't you grab the first microphone you see there, Mr. Zine.
President, good morning, Louise. I wanted to give my support for you. And I just asked these fire administrators, if they're here for moral support. And they're here for moral support. They want to make sure you get confirmed again. So I think that's a tribute to your leadership on the Fire Commission, the fact that we have representatives from the Fire Department here supporting you. I was very inspired by the comments you made at the memorial a few days ago at Fire Station 27.
Thank you.
You hit each and every issue, the memorial for the fallen firefighters. Very impressed with your work on the commission. Also, you haven't forgotten that San Fernando Valley. Because I know you're still very close to that community, which I represent. And I know that we've attended some events out there together. And your wonderful husband here, who's also supporting you. You've got my support and continue the good work representing the fine people of Los Angeles on that commission and supporting those fine firefighters, paramedics, that do that great service for our people.
Well, thank you. I want to thank them for coming. And I would like to say that because of being able to meet so many of the firefighters and visits to the station and whatever, just being with these people sort of renews my faith in the human condition. Because in the last few years, I've been rather depressed about what's happening to ethics, morals, things that are going on all over the world. But when you spend time with the firefighters, you know that the torch is still there.
Wonderful. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to be here today to rise in support of your reappointment to serve on the Fire Commission. And, you know, you've already heard this morning of some great councilmembers' words praising you for your passion on so many fire issues. But what I really have liked about you as a commissioner, as, you know, the commission system in the City of Los Angeles is the citizens' level of government, between the elected officials and the people.
Right.
And you have really epitomized that in the way you serve as a commissioner. We had one Fire Commission meeting down in San Pedro. You showed up. At the opening of our Fire Museum in San Pedro, you showed up. You're there. You're there in the community. You're there making a link between our public safety issues and the people in the community to which we all serve. But I've really enjoyed that about you. And whether there's a problem with a nonprofit group wanting some help on something, you have really been there to be the community's advocate. You listen, you take their concerns, and you turn them into action on the Fire Commission. And I have appreciated that. And my residents, my constituents in the Harbor area have appreciated that you really don't miss an opportunity to show up as representing the Fire Commission in our community. And we've really appreciated that. And that has not gone unnoticed.
No, it was a pleasure to come.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to rise in support of Louise. She has been a true public servant here for us. She is someone who has been an advocate for the Fire Department and for our firefighters out there. And as someone who visits the stations regularly, they appreciate that they have a commission that cares about their future and cares about making sure that we can protect the lives of our citizens. So I just rise to support you as well. Thank you again for all of your years of service and echo the many compliments you've already received from my colleagues.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioner. Thank you very much for your service. Thank you for your eloquent words last Thursday when we were out at Fire Station 27 at the Fire Museum, the Los Angeles City Fire Museum, where you spoke so eloquently in representing the Fire Commission on your concern for the firefighters and the men in the department. And it was a wonderful job that you did in those moments. But also, as many of my colleagues spoke of, you've traveled throughout this city doing your job as a commissioner for the Fire Commission. And I want to thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to chime in on what Mr. Labange and Mr. Weiss mentioned. I happened to be at that memorial service. And my only request is that you find a way to publish that speech. It was amazing. People should hear that. We should find a way to put it on the city's website. It was a great testament to the dangerous, life-threatening work that firefighters do every single day, the way they risk their lives without a moment's hesitation. And it was very poetic, very moving. And I hope that you find a way to get that on the city's website because it was one of the best speeches I'd ever heard relative to public safety. So try to do that.
I'll be glad to supply it to you.
That'll be your first job item as a reappointed commissioner.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow.
I really feel very deeply about the firefighters, as I have said. And whatever I have done to visit the stations or to advocate certain positions, what I get back from it far exceeds what I do for them. It's a wonderful exchange.
That's very, very evident.
Thank you.
And what Mr. Ludlow doesn't know is that you haven't published that speech because that serves as an incentive for councilmembers to follow you to a lot of these events and hear you speak and hear the personal delivery of that message. Other members wishing to be heard on Ms. Frankel's reappointment? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service to the city. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Item number 20 is confirmation of Dr. John L. Little, excuse me, Lett, Senior to the North Valley APC Planning Land Use Management Committee waived consideration.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Another commission reappointment before us. Members wishing to be heard on the reappointment of Mr. Lett? Seeing none. Let me be the first one to brag that this is a commissioner coming from the 7th Council District, Northeast San Fernando Valley, on the North Valley Area Planning Commission. It's been wonderful working with you. I know you have the community first and foremost at heart. I can only hope that your first term has been a great experience. And we're glad you're willing to make the commitment for another term.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Unanimous vote?
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Next item, please. Fourth with on item 20.
Item number 12 was called special by Councilmember Misakowski.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that was well discussed in the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. It's a discussion that was long ago asked for by actually Councilmember Galanter and Councilmember Brunson, which is to look at the issue of methane in our city and look at the issue of methane when we are building. Obviously, this came up most specifically in the first round of development in the area of Playa Vista. But as we, as the city, imposed conditions and standards that addressed the issue of methane, where and how methane might exist and where and how there might need to be development standards in that particular development community, it was recognized that we should look at the same kind of standard and application citywide. We are in a region, our geological structure allows and contains methane in it. Some of it dissipates normally and is not problematic. But every once in a while, we have pockets of it that do need to be addressed. I think the Building and Safety Department, working with the Fire Department and the Planning Department, have come up with standards that make sense. This recommendation is to go to the city attorney to draft an ordinance for those standards. And I have no problem. I know that the city attorney was involved in the preliminary drafting. But I would just like to ask, as we adopt this report and ask the city attorney to draft the ordinance, that we ask the city attorney if they can have the ordinance back to us within 30 days? So that would be my recommendation. My amendment to the committee report to have the city attorney have something back to us. It's not new to them. They have worked on it in great detail. And I think it is, they can be capable of doing that turnaround and ask for an aye vote on the amendment.
Okay. Is there any objection to that amending motion? If not, then we'll consider the matter as amended. Other members wishing to be heard on item number 12? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 12 as amended is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Gruel. And there are two reports on the file. A motion is required.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know many of my colleagues have supported this MOU that we have before us today. Colleagues, this is an MOU between the school district, the CRA, and the city relative to us working together to resolve potential problems in the selection of sites for the new next run of schools to be constructed throughout the city. I learned firsthand how challenging it can be when you have competing interests in a neighborhood where you both want to have more schools, but at the same time have economic development, housing, other issues. And how can we make this a win-win for both the school district and the city of Los Angeles? We were able, in my district at Laurel Plaza, to negotiate an agreement and have some exciting things that are going to happen with a new middle school in my district. At the same time, an economic development project that is going to bring theaters and restaurants and other, I think, very positive influences in our neighborhoods. The highlights of the MOU have several items, but it is going to maximize the benefits which school construction can bring to a neighborhood. It's also a way in which we can work closely with our schools to say, you are a partner. You are an integral part of the city of Los Angeles. This MOU gives us that opportunity. And I want to take this opportunity as well to thank the school district and Glenn Gritzner, who we worked very closely with, to make this MOU a reality and working with the mayor's office and my council colleagues. This is something that is going to make a real difference in the way in which we are able to place schools. So I just ask for an aye vote today. This is a model in which we can, as we develop these schools, make it very, very beneficial for the entire community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I want to congratulate Wendy Gruel for her great work on this. This came out of an age-old, unfortunately, age-old conflict in which communities are forced to choose between sometimes a school or good economic development, or a school and a park, or a school and housing, or housing or a park. These are the choices that are often put before a community. And it's incumbent upon us to find common solutions where we can bridge different governmental entities. And in Valley Village area, Wendy Gruel's great work, the mayor's great work, and the school district. And I took a call or two from Glenn, I remember, during this and talked with a number of folks who are working on this issue too. And really, the challenge to try to find our better angels instead of looking at whose eminent domain was more powerful sets a new model, I think, for how we can cooperate throughout the city. With both the CRA and the school district having state charters, there could have been nasty litigation, which is the last thing, I think, that people on the ground, the actual residents and the kids and the families in the area would have benefited from. So thank you for the school district for pushing as hard as you did to make sure that we kind of change the culture here. Thank you to the CRA for being willing to work with the school district and the mayor and Wendy Gruel for bringing this about with the superintendent in a way that hopefully will set that model. There's been a lot of talk about joint use. It goes back, I remember Tom Labange gave us our Christmas present a couple of years ago, was an LA Times insert. And it talked all about mixed use four decades ago and how this was going to be the next big thing. And four decades later, we still are struggling to actually implement it. But with the RAS zones that Ed Reyes has been able to champion and put through in our city that puts shops and housing together, now with this MOU, we're beginning to change that fabric and that toolbox here in Los Angeles to build and to integrate a city that's increasingly tightly packed, but more intelligently tightly packed and planned. So congratulations, and you have my full support on this too.
Mr. Reyes.
Just wanted to rise and comment and congratulate the fact that we got here. I think part of our challenge is how we define community and what makes a project work. And we have so many challenges. We have funds available through the development process of the school district. But that's also limited in that they have their timeframes, their restricted schedules, and the ability to make their case on how they go after funds. At the same time, we have people who are wondering what's going to happen to them when a site is discussed and they talk about X amount of units being displaced. And luckily, we have, not luckily, through very tedious work, somebody like Jackie Goldberg, the works of efforts of Councilmember Garcetti, State Senator Sadio, we've been able to at least craft some projects that can be used as case examples of how we can move things forward. I think the Belmont site is a good example of how we combined the Santa Monica Conservancy to create a park in the inner city to complement a school. Now we have the ability to look at a site where we can combine residencies and schools in one lot. And we are in discussions about how we bring more resources by working with developers who are right now in a position to work with us by looking at the affordable units they need to provide and how we create that synergy in that one place. Because quite frankly, it's all in the same neighborhood. So as we continue to move these kinds of projects forward, we should have the kind of approach. And I'm saying it's a cookie cutter, a one-size-fits-all. But I'm talking about how we put together this energy, how we put together this energy, this synergistic effort to meet that need, but we still have a long way to go. What I hear, and I can't, I need to point to a chart or verify this, but in certain parts of the city, we're willing to build for every student, I believe it's so much space per square foot, I think 200 square feet per student, and in some places, we're allowing only 100 square feet per student because of the constraints of that area. These are issues we still need to overcome, because it still talks about the tale of two cities, and we have to change that story. We have to reach different conclusions as we move forward. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to follow Mr. Reyes when he spoke about this solving the Belmont situation with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and also reach out again to the district to work with the Unified School District, with the Community College District. Opportunities are there. I don't want to harp on a golf course on Melrose Avenue, but I will, because it's disappointing, because you're going to go back and ask the people to support a bond in a few weeks, in the next coming months, that's much needed. But our cooperation between every level of government is so important, because it's the one person that we represent, all those people, whether it's the community college. And Eric, I just say it happened before you were council member there, but if you've been out the Hollywood freeway, there's almost a 17-story towers on Vermont Avenue, and they're going to close council member parks, they're closing off Snyder Field where you and I both labored at City College, playing for the Cubs, to make a new administration building, which is great. But at the same time, Ed, using that component of what you've now developed to work with the Unified School District on parcels around there to make sense, to build classes, and the concept of having smaller schools, which is real important on that, and trying to match that. You know, the tales of two cities will always have a tale of two cities, because there's two sides to everything, but we just want to make sure the quality in each classroom is there for all, and that young people from any part of the city have an opportunity. Because I know in my district at Kewega Elementary School, 90 buses leave every morning, and it's one of the saddest things in the world to see the parents leave their children, because they go to other schools, which, when we're built, there was nothing out there, so they're much larger, and they have more space. We have those challenges in this area. But I just want to thank everybody for being involved on this, and Wendy, you too, from your long work with Mayor Bradley, and now through this day as a council member, and Ed, your work too, and to try to get this done. But I do want to, I'm going to be tougher on the school district on the issues related to working with other entities of government when you have opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard on item 18? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 22 called special by council member Parks, and there is a card from the public. Public hearing has not been held on this matter.
Mr. Parks, did you wish to speak before we hear from our speakers?
We have the public hearing first, and then I'd like to have the city attorney come up and discuss the new ordinance.
Okay. The city attorneys can come forward. In the meantime, let's hear from Daniel Copeland.
Mr. President, honorable ladies and gentlemen of the Los Angeles City Council, Daniel Copeland, just would like to formally request that I may be able to purchase a copy of the list from the city clerk's office. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. This concludes public comment for this item. Back to you, Mr. Parks.
Mr. Chair, I would just like the city attorney, and really appreciate their quick effort in bringing forth an ordinance that allows us to use a state law that will allow us also to impact maybe as many as 1,000 pieces of property that are viewed as nuisances in the city, to allow the city to have a greater impact on some of the issues in communities. And I'd just like you to run through what the ordinance is intended to do and how council offices might be able to use it to the benefit of the community.
Of course. Good morning. My name is Janet Carr Cannon. I'm a deputy city attorney, and my colleague Barbara Hamilton and I are the authors of the ordinance. Essentially, the ordinance will change the way that the city of Los Angeles collects from property owners the money that it spends on code enforcement and nuisance abatements. Primarily, the change involves placing all of such costs on the tax roll, and that will be the primary collection method. However, the city will also reserve the right to file judicial foreclosure actions, in other words, lawsuits that would foreclose on the liens if there is some reason why the city would like to collect those costs faster than is allowed on the tax roll. In other words, it takes five years for a property to go up for a tax sale, but we have a number of properties in the city of L.A. that are suffering from nuisance conditions, and we see this as a very effective and valuable remedy for us in the citywide nuisance abatement program for addressing some of those nuisance conditions. The other primary benefit of the ordinance, of course, is that it is a more effective collection method and will improve the city's ability to collect these costs. And I have numbers of properties that could be affected, and also numbers of, that deal with the amounts of money that have been collected in the past, if you're interested in hearing about that.
One thing, I was wondering, do you have a list of those properties by council district? Is that where the repository is in the city attorney's office?
We do track these properties. I don't have them broken out by council district with me today, but the districts that are, have the most number of these types of properties would be the First District, the Eighth District, the Seventh District, the Ninth District, the Fourteenth District, and the Fifteenth District. Currently, we have approximately 1,300 properties that we consider nuisance properties, and they are concentrated in those districts. And we also have 67 vacant lots that we think would be the most likely targets to start with in terms of foreclosing on city liens against those properties.
One thing also, you mentioned about a five-year period if we went through the prior process. What is the timeline that we think that we can move on this new process?
Currently, the process that we have is an administrative foreclosure process. It takes anywhere from five to 10 years to foreclose on a city lien. Under the new ordinance, all of, the vast majority of the properties would be on a five-year timeframe, because that's how long it takes for a tax sale to be held on a defaulted lien. However, on any property that the city decides to bring a lawsuit to file, to foreclose on the lien, it can be anytime after 45 days after the invoice is issued. So it's essentially, a lawsuit can be filed immediately after the city council assesses the property for the lien, and then it's just the ordinary course of a lawsuit, generally takes anywhere from six months to a year and a half to complete.
And also, who could invoke the process?
We see it, as I said, as a potential remedy in the citywide nuisance abatement program. It's a remedy that we have looked at as being very valuable to us when we find that our traditional enforcement remedies are not effective. For example, I have a property owner right now who's in prison, and he's not impressed with my threats of filing misdemeanor charges against him. If I could foreclose on the lien the city has against his property, I could put that up for a sheriff's auction and turn it over to, have it sold to a property owner that I think would be more responsible.
And this would be, the sale could go to any resident of the city of L.A., or is it limited as to who could have access?
The result of a judicial foreclosure action is that it goes up for sheriff's auction, which means that it is open to bids by the general public. However, the city has the ability to bid its lien amount, and if you'll see just today, some of those lien amounts are significant. There was one on calendar today for $83,000. That could be the successful bid. We are looking into the options of encouraging nonprofits that are identified as, those that are, have a history of effectively turning nuisance properties into productive use, and perhaps waiving the city's lien in order to encourage them to bid at the sheriff's auction, in hopes of making sure that the successful bidder is somebody that, who will put this property into productive use.
And the intent of this is not for the city to take ownership of the property, but to put it to a better use?
That's right. When we have a sheriff's auction where the city's lien is a significant amount, that decision would have to be made whether or not the city wants to bid its lien amount and become a property owner. I don't, the more, it may be, it may be a better use of that lien amount to, like I said, waive the amount in order to encourage a nonprofit who's been identified by the city as being a responsible property owner, somebody who would put that into productive use, to waive that lien amount, to encourage them to be the successful bidder.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues. I would like to ask for an "I" vote on this issue. This is something that I think that we should commend the city attorney's office for seeing a different, and a new tool to help all of us deal with nuisance properties. We've seen them in many instances where we've torn down nuisance housing to create a nuisance vacant lot, and it's gone on for years and years, and so now we have an additional tool that helps us, and at first count, we're talking about maybe 1,300 properties, and although it, it's concentrated in about five council districts, again, it helps quality of life on a variety of issues. Also, request, Mr. Chair, after the vote, that we go forth with on this issue.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and many of the questions I was going to ask Mr. Parks did during his questioning about this program. The one issue I had is, just for definition, and primarily for, I think, people that may be watching, how do you define a nuisance property for this purpose?
A nuisance property would be a property that's in violations, violation of the vacant building ordinance, one that has been boarded and fenced and cleaned either by the city or by the property owner, but that is continuously broken into and is subject to criminal activity. Those are the ones that we deal primarily with in the citywide nuisance abatement program, and those are the ones that we see to be subject to the likelihood of filing a judicial foreclosure action against.
Was this a new state law that was passed, or just one that has been in the books we haven't utilized in the past?
It's a combination. There were some laws that were passed in 1990 that dealt with nuisance abatement costs, and then there was a new government code section, 54988, that was passed in 1999, that expanded the ability to add code enforcement costs also to the tax roll and to create liens against properties to collect those costs.
And one has been the conventional method in which we have, you know, sought damages for this prior to us being able to put it on the tax, tax rolls or the tax lien.
Yeah, the current processes for code enforcement is that property owners are sent an invoice, and then if they're not paid, they're sent to a collection agency, and the only collection method I'm aware of so far has been small claims actions and other lawsuits for monetary judgments only, but they weren't focused on the property, they were focused on the property owner.
So the hope will be, in this instance, that we actually will save money by not having to go through some of those lengthy potential legal matters, but just putting it on the tax lien and having that available?
Not only that, but I think that property owners are more inclined to pay these costs if they appear on their tax bill, because they understand that if they don't pay their tax bill, it will go up for a tax auction, whereas the threat of being called by collection agencies wasn't as great and wasn't as motivating a factor in actually paying the bill.
Great. Well, I just want to stand in support of this ordinance. I think it's a great, great idea and a way in which we can deal with some of these nuisance properties much more quickly and effectively, and thank the city attorney's office for your, your action on this today.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. That's the final speaker on this matter. Mr. Parks?
One thing came to mind, we're talking about the liens regarding the abatements. What about additional liens the city may have, such as warden power and other things that may occur while the property is in that condition or nuisance condition?
These liens are subject to the normal laws of liens. If the property is sold at a tax sale, the city's lien will have the same priority as tax liens, and will become part of the minimum bid at that tax sale. If the city brings a lawsuit to judicially foreclose on the lien, that lien then takes the place in the priority of when it was created. In other words, if a mortgage exists on the property, or if there are existing liens on the property at the time the city attaches its liens, those get paid first before the city gets paid, including DWP liens or anything else.
But is it coming on each city department to create that lien in order to get in that step-by-step process?
That's correct, and the Department of Building and Safety, which is the department that incurs the cost of boarding and fencing and demolishing buildings, would take its place in line with those liens.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Councilmember Parks for bringing this to this level of exposure in terms of what we need to get done. I have more of a technical legal question. In the district I represent, I have many properties that are irregular shape because of all the rail lines that go through my district, remnants of what the freeways left in our neighborhoods. These become pockets that property, private property owners actually control, but there's very little use for them. They become dumping sites. This is where all our bulky items and contractors come, and they unload truckloads of garbage and debris along these rail lines, and Marvin Way and Mount Washington Highland Park and Lincoln Heights along the freeway. Can the city fence these areas off and put a lien on the property owners for not keeping those properties up? What are restrictions there? I'm hope, this is an appropriate question asked of you now, I'm putting you on the spot, but since we're dealing with how we deal with these nuisance properties, I'm really desperate about finding a way to shut out these folks who tend to dump on these pockets that, quite frankly, we can't, they can't use, we're not using, and they're dumping sites.
I honestly don't know what the Department of Building and Safety's policy is on fencing those types of vacant lots. I know that there are vacant lots that do get fenced if they are dumping sites, if they do have walls that are subject to repeated graffiti. Certainly, this ordinance would affect those types of lots in the sense that the city could make the decision then, if the city is incurring the cost to clean up the trash that's been dumped, if the city does incur the cost to fence those lots, the city could make the decision to foreclose on those liens, but then you're into the situation of, is it commercially viable? Is there somebody who's going to bid at that sheriff's sale who's going to want that property? Or does the city want to take possession of that property?
Well, these sites become great candidates for neighborhood pocket parks, community gardens, vegetable gardens, places where people take care of and are willing to protect. When you see that truck coming down the street to unload their dump, someone will stand up, or someone will call it in. But right now, it's no man's land, and they're neglected properties, and they're private properties.
This ordinance could give the city the mechanism to turn those in, to convert that type of property to public use and to convert them to parks, if that is something that the city wants to devote its resources to. This, this does provide that mechanism in the sense that if the city incurs the cost of maintaining those properties by picking up the trash and debris that's been dumped there, you can then create a lien for that cost and eventually foreclose on it if it's unpaid.
I've literally committed block grant to fund nonprofits and young people to clean these areas, because we can't do it within our cycles of maintenance, our existing departments. So I'm actually going into a more creative approach and trying to clean them up, but it's like, it has to happen every other day, almost, given the chronic dumping that goes on in my district.
If you, if you believe that the answer is to take that property out of the hands of private ownership and to convert it to public use, then yes, this ordinance would be the mechanism for doing that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. With no one else now wishing to speak, we now have the ordinance before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, and let's send that forthwith to the mayor, and let's also send item 42 forthwith. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members, before we go on to the next item, let me introduce a group of 45 residents and members of Pacific Palisades American Association of Retired People who are visiting us in the chamber. Please stand and be recognized, and I recognize high haves in the front. Thank you for visiting us. Hope you enjoy the building and your tour of City Hall. They are being led by their chaperone, Eleanor Oswald. Hi. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number 33 was called special by council member Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, and good wishes to all the ARP members. I am a member of your wonderful group. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Madam President. Do we have staff here on this item? Information Technology, it's regarding the emergency communications operations for police and fire, and if they're not here, I'd like to hold till they do appear.
Is there any staff here on this item, 33?
Let's just hold it on the table, please.
All right, we will hold it on the table and see if they can come. If not, we'll continue it for one day. What remains on the desk?
This is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
All right, we do have one card submitted on public comment. Let me call forward Mr. Charles Griffin at this time.
My name is Charles Griffin, and I'm from Newport Beach. I'm president of the New Millennium Group, and primarily it's dedicated, it's a political action commission, committee for regional airports, and so I'd like to readdress the regional airport situation. And we need, obviously, LAX is growing and will continue to grow even to the 70, over 70 million annual passengers, which is limited, but we need the capability to handle additional passengers. And I would like to encourage you to lobby Congress. Congress, in the first article of the Constitution, was given the responsibility for interstate commerce, and I wish you, I wish you to lobby Congress to pass a bill to make El Toro available to Los Angeles to lease and operate on behalf of the needs of our region. And I have a website, which you can all visit and get the details on what we have been working on for a logical airport at El Toro. And also, I need you to lobby the federal government in another, another meaningful way, and that is that the Federal Noise Standard, which is leveled at 65 dB CNEL, should be lowered to 60 dB CNEL, because it means that, over the years, that the 65 dB was set when we had noisy DC8s, 707s, and 727s, and we could not afford to buy all the property or, or to mitigate the impact on all the people that that would impact. And, but subsequent to that time, we have improved the aircraft, and I have worked for some 50 years in developing the DC7, the DC8, the DC9, the DC10, the MDA, the C-17, and the B2 stealth bomber to provide efficient, quieter aircraft. But I think now it is time to change the national standard to what was the state standard of 60 dB CNEL, so that we can get the federal funds that are generated by the airports to be used by the local redevelopment around the airport to give equity to the people that are impacted and should not be, they should be able to be moved and be given, be given compensation for the move or for insulation. And so I urge you to address this, and particularly, as far as regional airports are concerned, you have one at Palmdale, which you should not neglect either. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Griffin. That concludes the public comment period based on the speaker cards that were submitted. Is staff here on item 33, the item Mr. Zine had called special? I don't see that. Mr. Zine, do you have any objection to continuing this till Friday?
I'd like to-
I'd like to continue it next week because I won't be here Friday. If we can continue it next Tuesday, please?
Okay, then that will be continued to next?
That'll be fine.
Next, oh, I'm sorry, they are here. All right, we did have them come.
Well, they are here. Okay, well, we won't continue.
Mr., the chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. On this issue, I know we've discussed this in committee, there's a concern regarding the-
Oh, thank you.
-police-fire communications being interrupted by cell sites where transmissions are not being received by emergency personnel. And this is not just a local issue, but I met with representatives from other governmental agencies around the country, and this problem seems to, worse, it's worsening, it's not getting better. Where are we going with it and what are the recommendations?
I'm Tony Al, the Director of Communication Services with ITA. Actually, the frequency band that we are operating, both in the police MDT as well as the fire voice radio systems, are on the same band as where Nextel is operating.
Now, is that the Nextel two-way or is it the-
Nextel two-way.
The two-way?
And basically, before they get the licenses, they get the license from the FCC, same way as we do. But the problem that exists is that whenever a Nextel site is built, because of the closeness of the frequencies, if we operate close to those sites, if our few officers are out close to their sites, then what happens is that we receive what we call, our receivers get descents. But if we go away from that site, then there's no problem. So anytime before they get the licenses, they do coordinate with the agencies in this area. We do some testing before that. If there's an interference problem, they try to cut the power down and direct the antennas away from the locations where we operate and try to resolve the issue.
What are we, what are we doing to the problems we're having now? Because I know in police cars right now in Los Angeles-
Yeah.
-transmissions are not being received both ways, to communications and back to the units. What are we doing to correct that at this particular time? Because this problem has been worsening.
If, if the problem exists and we do contact Nextel, we find out from LAPD, we go out to the site, we measure the tests, and then we talk to Nextel to see that we are getting interference to resolve that. But since the frequencies are all intermingled between the police-fire and Nextel, and this is a national issue because it's happening all over the country, the FCC is taking a position to resolve this issue by relocating all the public safety agencies to one end of the spectrum and Nextel to the other.
When are we going to do that? And what do we do in the meantime?
What we do is that we, as a city of L.A., provide our comments through APOCO, which is an association of public safety communication officials, which represent all public safety agencies in the United States in frequency coordination with the FCC. So we provide our comments to APOCO and APOCO provides, APOCO is agreeing with all the public safety agencies that this is the solution that will resolve the problem completely. And FCC is actually going through that process. Most probably, what we have been told is that they'll make a decision sometime this year. And to resolve that problem, there's going to be a cost associated with relocating the, the systems to a different frequency band. So basically what Nextel is proposing is to provide $850 million as a whole deal to resolve with all the agencies so that we can be moved over to the other band. As of right now, the resolution from the FCC has not been out yet. We are waiting for that as to what the final resolution is going to be.
Do we grant them authority to post those transmission sites? Do they have to get approval from the city for their antennas, Nextel?
No. Well, what they do is that they are not required to get that approval from us for a site, but what they would do as part of the FCC frequency allocation is that they will contact us and say that we would like to put up a site up here, we would like to test with you. So if it is close to our site, they are required to provide us the information if they are close to our sites, then what we do is that we do conduct some tests in that area to see how much of interference it is because they are usually low-powered. But we cannot go in and tell them that you may not implement a site there because it's an FCC rule that allows them to implement the sites.
So they can put a site up-
Yes.
-and that will interfere with our communications and we can't do anything about it?
No, if, before they put a site up, they will coordinate with us and we do some tests. And then if we see that there's going to be interference and we tell them that, you know, you need to cut your power down or, because they have a whole slew of frequencies and each site is not using all the frequencies. So we indicate to them what frequencies that we are operating in this, let's say for example, if LAPD operates Central Bureau frequencies. So we say, these are the frequencies that we operate in Central Bureau. So if they can allocate the frequencies that adjacent to our frequencies that we use in the valley down here, then the chances of interference is minimized. So that's what we try to do to coordinate, to minimize the impact of interference to both police and fire at this time.
So if the police department's having a problem with the transmissions now, there's something you can do to correct it or not?
Yeah, what they will do is the LAPD will contact us through the X Division and we'll have the police officers together with us. We go out to the site, we get ahold of Nextel people, get to the site, we do the test. And if we see interference, then we tell them. And they try to resolve that problem by either, you know, directing the antennas away or down tilt it or move it, you know, change the direction of transmission or cut the power down.
So all, all issues with this should go to X Division, LAPD, then to your department-
Yes.
-for correction. And then in the meantime, that's the short-term solution. The long-term solution is different frequencies for the emergency services.
That is correct.
And Nextel's going to pay for that?
Right now, Nextel's proposal to the FCC is that they will pay $850 million-
To Los Angeles?
No, for the whole country.
For the whole country?
For all public safety agencies that are operating in that-
How much will it cost LAPD and L.A. City Fire to convert?
Right now, we haven't really looked at whether we'll be required to move, and it depends on which frequency that we have to move and whether some of the frequencies can be just retuned or some of the frequencies, equipment will need to be replaced. But the thing is, the theory behind all of this, Councilman, is that whatever public safety agencies are operating, that it is very clear through APOCO, to FCC, that we don't have the money to spend to do any relocation efforts. Every single penny that we need, that we need to do must come from them. And that's what they're trying to negotiate and make sure that public safety agencies are covered so that when we are relocating, we don't have a downtime, you know, while we're doing-
And we could hear from the city attorney on this?
I think that pretty much wraps up the whole thing, other than the fact the FCC in March of 2002 came out with a notice of proposed rulemaking. And we're waiting for the proposed rule. In the meantime, I think various organizations and trade, trade groups such as the APOCO and also the telecom industry group have put in their, by, excuse me, their input. So we're waiting for the FCC to come out with the proposed rule.
But we don't have the authority to have Nextel remove towers?
No, we don't.
Because that's what the motion asked for if there was a conflict because the emergency services is critical. And I've received a number of complaints and I witnessed it, I experienced it myself.
Yes.
So I know that as we continue with this dialogue, we have a public safety with the officers trying to do their job and they can't communicate. That creates quite a public safety dilemma for the personnel who are trying to do what they're supposed to do.
We are very well at that, Council. We're trying to resolve this issue the best we can under the conditions that we are operating in. We coordinate with the LAPD completely on that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. All right, item 33 is now before us after that report. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved.
Madam President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, go ahead and clear the desk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, October 17th for city business that meets council policy.
Councilmember Hahn is excused.
Councilmember Garcia requests to be excused Tuesday, December 9th, Wednesday, December 10th, Friday, December 12th for city business. That also meets council policy.
Mr. Garcia is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
All right, I'm going to ask the sergeants to help us, members of the public who are present, and we are going to go into executive session, so we need to clear the room. Would all present who are not supposed to be here, please exit? Madam Clerk, what is before us?
Settlements on item number 48, settlement in the case of Morgan versus the City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $300,000.
We have the recommendation before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Next item is item number 44, and that settlement in the amount of $1,350,000 in the case of Litwin versus City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That member's, that is approved.
Item number 43, settlement in the case of Sandoval versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $120,000.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
Item number 45, a settlement in the case of Hardy versus City of Los Angeles. That's a workers' comp case, $98,095 and a life pension thereafter in the amount of $38.65 per week.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item number 47 is also a workers' comp case, Nixon versus City of L.A., and that's in the amount of $106,375 and a life pension thereafter at the amount of 5411 a week.
Again, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And number 46 is also a workers' comp, Garcia versus City of L.A., and that's in the amount of $150,000.
Again, open the roll, members, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. We will send all of those forthwith.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
All right, the desk is cleared. Are there any announcement members? Any announcements? Are there any adjourning tributes? Adjourning tributes? If not, oh, Mr. Weiss? Could everyone please stand for an adjourning tribute?
I just have one announcement.
All right, before, okay, an announcement by Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I'd just like to announce that at Crenshaw High School tomorrow, 11:30 to 12, we're going to have a ninth grade assembly for new students. And it's, the unique part of it is that we're going to have the Human Relations Commission, also members of their student government. We're also going to have as our invited guests, Ms. Perry and Ms. Padilla, Mr. Villa Rogosa, to come and talk to the students about life choices and this issue that is going on in Crenshaw High with some of our black and brown students being intolerant. And so that's, just want to put that out as an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Again, I think it's, we have now adjourning tributes. Could everyone please stand in attention? And let me recognize Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that my colleagues join me today in adjourning in memory of Lloyd Stockell, who passed away on October 2nd. He was 67 and he served for a long time, more than a generation, with the investment banking firm of Goldman Sachs. He was one of their longtime partners, instrumental in their rise on the West Coast of the United States. And he's survived by his wife Susan, their two sons Eric and Douglas, and two grandsons. The entire family has long been involved in many philanthropic endeavors and Lloyd will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also ask that we adjourn in memory of Geneva Stevens. She was a long-term resident of the 8th District, passed away at the age of 92 on Wednesday, September the 24th. She was born in Drew, Missouri, on May 24th, 1911, relocated in Los Angeles in 1940, where she married Farren Stevens in 1941. They have been married for 63 years. In '48, they purchased their lifelong home on Chesley Drive. They've had two children, Judy and Jimmy. She was very active in the Chesley Avenue Neighborhood Watch, had a long-term association with the 77th Division of the Los Angeles Police Department. Her memorial service is to be held in Inglewood Martrary on Saturday, October 18th at 3:00 P.M. She leaves her husband, Farren, her daughter Judy, and the son Jimmy.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other tributes? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll. Council is adjourned.